We have a presentation this evening. And Brian Kamler with Plant and Moran is here to talk about ARPA and some of the revenue loss calculations. For those of you who aren't aware, Plant and Moran is the city's comptroller. They have been the comptroller since 2008. Before that, it's a little historical perspective. The city of Saginaw, prior to Plant and Moran serving as our comptroller, was six months to a year late on the two audits previous to them coming onboard. So we had a city employee who was a comptroller and accounting staff. There was a lot of turnover there, which has been an issue with a number of local units over the years, particularly with financial issues. And we had probably in excess of 20 audit sightings, maybe more than that, maybe close to 30. They came in and in short order, those were cleaned up and our audits have been very good since then. So we did work on some of the revenue loss projections and we asked Plant and Moran to review that work as well. So I think they have a general update here, general information here as well. So with that, I'll ask Brian if he can come to the podium and present.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to come speak with you. As Tim mentioned, we've been working for the city of Saginaw for quite a while, but I've never had a chance to come here and address this body. So on behalf of Plant and Moran, thank you very much for the opportunity to serve the city of Saginaw all these years. We greatly appreciate that. With me tonight is Amanda Cronk, one of our senior managers. She oversees our onsite folks, and so she's very in tune with what is going on here at the city in the accounting department. My job with the firm, I'm a partner, been with Plant and Moran for 23 years. I oversee the entire group that provides this internal accounting service to approximately 80 municipalities a year. So I have my own book of business and my own clients. I stay within arms' reach of Saginaw, so I kind of know what's going on in the details every year, but I trust Amanda and our team to take care of you, and they do a very good job. We do have, the first few slides I'm going to let Amanda cover is more of an overview of the ARPA program. I think you know all or most of that information already. I know you've had many conversations about it and had other speakers. But then halfway through the deck will be really, I think, what is the meat of the presentation, the thing that we're here to talk about. Number one, the revenue loss calculation, which is very confusing. It's confusing to us. And so I just want to clear up some misconceptions about that and then get into some considerations that the city should think about as you're determining how to spend the ARPA money, what to do with it. And then at the very end, we'll have a next steps list of things that you should be doing, either letting the city administrator take care of it, letting the finance director take care of it. But there is some legwork that should be done between now and when you make a decision as to how exactly you're going to spend that money. So with that, I will turn it over to Amanda and I'll be right back.
Great, thanks, Brian. So as Brian mentioned, we just want to set the stage a little bit, just refresh your memory a little bit on some things that you talked about, strategic planning and other discussions that you've had. So as you know, this ARPA program is really dividing up approximately $350 billion to local units of government, just like the city. And due to your metropolitan or entitlement community status, you have received half of your expected allotment of just over $52 million. So the city has received that first payment and is expected to receive the second payment in the coming months estimated in the spring of 2022. So just a quick reminder here on broad categories, we like to refer to them as the four pillars that you can use the ARPA money on. So you can see here, items 1A and 1B are focused on public health expenditures and addressing any negative impacts to the community regarding or related to the public health emergency, providing premium pay for essential workers. Number three, as Brian mentioned, is the lost revenue pillar. And then the last item is really focused on infrastructure in the water and sewer space and broadband. So let's talk about and remind everyone what we can't use the money on. And that's really focused on these few bullet points here. So we can't make additional contributions to MERS or fund any sort of pension. We really can't pay any debt service on current debt, reduce taxes, match for federal grant programs that require match, and we can't save it for a rainy day, so we can't bank So Brian is going to move into the lost revenue replacement calculator and the considerations that really go into that.
Thank you. So before I get into this, I just want to make sure everyone understands, you know, people at home, people in the audience, council as well. So when the federal government gives you money, they are very strict about how it's used. So they provide guidelines. It's usually written into the law that this is how money can be used when we give it to you. That first initial law is usually very difficult to comprehend. And so they follow it up with a series of frequently asked questions. So in the case of ARPA, they first, you know, we heard as it, when it was a bill, that one of the components was going to be this revenue loss. And coming through or still during the pandemic, we that work in local government and serve local government, we knew that there were all of these pockets of revenue, these revenue streams that were severely impacted by the pandemic. So, you know, coming, like when the world first fell apart, state share revenue, which is tied to sales tax, fell off a cliff for a couple of months. And then it came back. So when we first heard that revenue loss is part of this, we're like, well, great. That couple hundred thousand, a million, whatever your state share revenue was for that period of time, we get to recoup that, right? No, that's not it. All of the district courts were shut down. They couldn't process tickets and citations. Well, we could, we can just recoup that, right? No. So through these FAQs, through the additional guidance, it's become clear what they really meant. And so it's, there's this formula that they put out, and it is, it's confusing. So it's not targeted at the individual revenue streams that municipalities were hurt by. Income tax, when people stopped coming into a city to go to work, they stopped paying income tax to that particular city because they were working from home. Myself, because I work in so many cities, normally I have to file city income tax in four or five different places. Last year, I didn't. I only had to file one. So all of those communities that were counting on my money, they didn't get it. But they don't get to use revenue loss either to replace specifically that income tax. The formula is citywide. So it's not these individual streams, it's look at the entire picture. And it establishes a base year. So the last fiscal year that you had prior to the beginning of the pandemic in March of 2020, so in your case, that's June 30, 2019, that becomes your base year. And we're going to compare all future years to that base year. Now, you get an audit every year, Tim just talked about it. You get a clean audit every year. Those are very reliable numbers. By the time we've done our work to close the year, by the time the auditors have done their work on it and really kicked the tires on it, that's great. However, our friends in the federal government, when they put out the guidance, they told us, you're not using the fiscal year, you have to use a calendar year. So even though your audit and all of the records that we talk about every year and the way that your budget's put together is focused on a year ending June 30, these magic milestones in this act are 1231. Folks that don't do accounting or work in finance might say, well, who cares? It's all the same, right? You just pick 12 months and that's what it is. Well, no, because certain things in government are cyclical and they happen at a certain period of time. Not every month is the same as the month before or the month after. So it doesn't, it really does matter what months we're looking at. And all the work that goes into your audit, that's all to make things true as of June 30. So there's all these adjustments that happen in the month of June. So now if we're going to compare a calendar year to that June 30, 2019 fiscal year, that to my mind, and I do this every day, but to my mind, it's like, well, what about those year-end adjustments? When do we recognize them? Property taxes get levied on July 1, and we collect them over a few months, and then we don't collect them anymore, and then we settle with the county, and then they give us our delinquent taxes in the spring. So we levied in July, 1231 happens, now we're in another calendar year, and we get last year's delinquents. When do we recognize this money? And unfortunately, the FAQs that have been provided by the federal government are not great yet. They've provided additional information, but the questions that I just asked are not included. And so there is still some gray area as to what we're supposed to do with this revenue loss calculation. So when this happens, and this happens all the time with grants, as the grant goes on or as the federal funding goes on, they amend and update the understanding, and they will update the FAQs and they will put out more information. And it will become clear. But in the meantime, municipalities have to act with the best understanding that they have at that time. And when the, your auditors eventually audit this money, and I should mention, there's two different audits that you're subject to. There's the financial statement audit, and then there is a federal grants audit. We call it the single audit. That single audit looks at compliance. Did you spend the money that the federal government gave you in compliance with the rules and the expectations that the federal government sets? And it's very much a black and white yes or no. You either did what they said you were supposed to do with it, or you didn't. Now with your financial statement audit, if it's a little bit off, we call it materiality, it's materially correct, it's good enough. Single audit doesn't work that way. Now if you make a mistake in your financial statement audit, you get a finding. Those are called material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. So as Tim mentioned, you had a bunch of those back in the day, and you don't get those now. But really, they're kind of a slap on the wrist. Not much happens thereafter, other than the fact that you can't stand proudly behind those financial statements. It's a little bit messier. But with the single audit, if you fail that audit, the federal government can ask you to repay the money that you've misspent. And so there's a lot of risk associated with these federal grants. There's a lot of risk with this revenue loss calculation. Now there is some nice things in the calculation that they've given us. So in Michigan, we don't usually get 4% inflation. In fact, in the 27 years since Proposal A, we've only exceeded 4% once, it was 4.4. But over the 27 years since, I believe the average, the average inflation number in Michigan is closer to 2.2. So the federal government's saying, well, you should get 4.1. And so as part of this calculation, from that base of June 30, 2019, we get to say, well, if there wasn't a pandemic, if things were going according to plan normally, we should have gotten 4.1% per year, greater than that base year. And so when we go to do this calculation and compare your actual results to what this revenue should have been according to this calculation, you're going to get a bigger revenue loss than if you just compared year over year, what we would normally expect. Another part of this calculation is you get to measure it at four points in time. So this is a long grant. You get to spend this $52 million from now all the way until 1231, 2026. It's a lot of time. It's also not a lot of time, and we'll talk about why that is. But you have to commit the money by 1231, 2024. So over the next several years, you're going to measure this revenue loss at 1231, 2020, which is the one that we've already done and are still refining, 12, excuse me, 1231, 2020. We're going to do it again, 1231, 2021, and do it again in '22, and do it again in '23. So why are we doing all this? They gave us rules. What's, what's the point? Let's just go spend it on what we want to spend it on, build what we want to build, provide what we want to provide. Why? Well, because this one of the four pillars strategically is the best one to spend. This provides the most leniency, provides the widest berth. If you refer back to the slide that had options 1 and 1A, those are pretty specific to dealing with public health issues. If you needed a new HVAC system in this building and you wanted to make sure that the air filtration was good so that in the event that someone here has COVID, the person next to him may not get it, you could, under bucket 1, 1A, you could put in a new HVAC system in this building. Because it's public health, we're all part of the public, we're all breathing the same air, okay? But what about roads? We need roads in Michigan. Our governor ran on fixing the roads. Where in those first four buckets does it mention roads? It doesn't. Bucket 1 is about public health and economic development, doesn't mention roads. The second bucket's about premium pay, doesn't mention roads. The third bucket is this revenue loss calculation. The fourth is water, sewer, or broadband. Doesn't mention roads. But what if you want to do roads? Well, you can do roads under revenue loss. Because revenue loss is wide open. Once you qualify as having had a revenue loss, and you did, but once you qualify that amount, it's really wide open what you can do with it. You want to do roads, you want to do bridges, you want to build something that's not water, sewer, or broadband, you want to buy a fire truck. The only things you can't do are the ones that Amanda mentioned on that one slide. You can't pay pension, you can't pay your debt service, you can't cut taxes. But you can do all of these other things. So strategically, revenue loss of the four options, in my mind, is the best of the options. Now, after those four measurement dates, are you going to have $52 million of revenue loss? Probably not. I don't have a crystal ball, but I'm saying probably not. You're really not going to know until you go through each of those calculations over the next several years. Now, based on the calculation that the city's already done, and so, you know, my staff did one calculation, a member of the budget team did another, I think the answer's probably somewhere in the middle, around $5 million a year. And we'll have a more clear, defined, you know, good, good number very, very soon. So, but I think it'll be around five. Now, if that holds true over the next four years, and it may, but again, I don't have a crystal ball, but it may, that should give you $20 million of this, not free, because it's not free, but this more strategically available money to spend. Now you can still do your water and sewer projects if you want, you can still do some social programs, you can still do some economic development, but the city does a lot of different things. And this really is a, hopefully, God willing, once in a lifetime opportunity. Hopefully, we don't have to do this again. But it's a once in a lifetime opportunity to take care of a lot of things that may be going on here in the city. So our recommendation is to consider this revenue loss for what it is. It's an option to spread money through the city operations in a way that the other three buckets don't allow. Couple other things to consider. So you do have until 2026 to spend the money, but you do have to commit the money. That's the wording used in the act. You have to commit the money by 2024. It's not that far away. It'll be here before you know it. I had a conversation with a well-known engineering firm, I don't know if you use them, but they are very well-known throughout Michigan, do a lot of work with municipalities, and I asked their CEO, what are you guys going to do with all of the ARPA projects? And if this infrastructure bill passes, which we now know has, what are you guys going to do? And he goes, Brian, honest to God, I don't know. We're busy right now, and our clients haven't started spending this money. So all of the construction projects are going to need architects and they're going to need engineers. So if you're going to do a project, you need to get near the front of the line. So you have time to spend the money, and you have less time to commit it, but you may have even less time to get the contractors and the engineers in order. The rules aren't final yet. So I mentioned several times that they keep changing them. Now, in every other walk of life, you usually get a deadline. So they tell us, you know, your taxes are due on a certain day, your performance evaluation's due on a certain day, we know that things happen on a calendar. Federal government doesn't always work that way. So they passed the law in March, they issued the first FAQ, and I believe May, early May, it's been revised several times since, but they haven't told us when the rules are going to be final. We keep waiting. The period of them accepting questions from the local government community, from the accounting community, that passed in July. So we were kind of hoping that they would tell us by now what the final, final rules are, and they haven't. So things could change. Fingers crossed, the first thing that they should change is getting rid of that 1231 measurement date. Because that makes it very, very complicated for us to figure out what revenue goes where for your year that normally ends June 30. The National League of Cities, so I believe you belong to the Michigan Municipal League, so every state has a version of the MML, the National League of Cities is the umbrella that all of those 50 states talk to. And so the National League of Cities, that was, I believe, their number one recommendation, was just make it fiscal year for everybody. This will be a whole heck of a lot easier. So we're hoping that changes. But there may also be other things related to projects that could happen or, you know, more definitive things that are included or excluded. Another big question, which kind of follows the first one about engineering and architecture, is do you, as a municipality, does your staff have the time and the energy to manage another $52 million of work? Most municipalities in Saginaw is no different. Most municipalities are very lean-staffed. And folks are working really, really hard just to do their normal job. And so trying to come up with new programs that require administration and are going to be audited at the risk of the city having to repay that money, it's kind of a scary concept to me. So you're not alone. I mean, every city's doing this. Smaller cities got a lot less money. Because you're one of the metropolitan cities, you've got the double-digit millions. The small cities that aren't entitlement communities, they got about $100 per resident. You got significantly more than that. I mean, Detroit got 800 and some million. So these are crazy numbers, the bigger you are. But do you have the manpower to administer this? And if you don't, there are consulting firms that will help you do that. In fact, I introduced one of them to the city already, but there are others as well. But they, there is a way to get supplemental assistance through, for the next four or five years as you spend this money. And so if you determine that, hey, you know what, this is a big undertaking, I'm not sure we've got the manpower and the hours to do it, I would also recommend talking to one or more of those companies and getting the assistance that you need. Another consideration, the county got money too. The state got money too. You're not in your own little silo. There's not a moat around the entire city. You get to interact with others. And I know from conversations with Saginaw County and from Michigan Department of Treasury, they're more than willing to partner with the local units to try to do some of these big projects, because they recognize too that this is once in a lifetime. So if there is something that would benefit the entire county or a greater portion of the county, or is part of a statewide program, the county and the state would be willing to work with you. And so might you be able to leverage some of your $52 million to get a bigger piece of the statewide pie? It's out there, but you have to investigate it. And although $52 million is a heck of a lot of money, it's still finite. So that money is going to be spent once. Now, if you create a never-ending program, what happens when the $52 million runs out? So if you were to build, you know, a football stadium and hope to attract a professional team, well, that, that building is going to take maintenance for the next 100 years. Probably not a good idea. Programs that you expect to have a long tail are eventually going to run out of funding. Your general fund doesn't have the ability to pick up that tab five years from now. So you really need to consider, is this a short-term project or is this a long-term, perhaps in perpetuity, project? Now, you can do programs, certainly, that's fine. But are you going to be okay canceling that program at some point when you run out of money? Because this $52 million will go away at some point. So it may be better to do one-time expenses with this one-time revenue. Otherwise, you are creating a problem down the road that may or may not be solved with the resources you have at that time. Next steps, this is really a summary of the things that we've just talked about. I know you've already gone through a lot of discussion about what does the city need? Probably, you know, that's a conversation that never ends, you know, before, during, or after ARPA. But of those things, prioritize them. What's the most important to us? You're going to be able to do some of them, probably not all of them. But the ones that don't have another funding source, to me, become a higher priority. So if you can pay for certain things with other grants or, you know, water, sewer charges or what have you, if there's another way to do it, well, then maybe that's not something the ARPA money should cover. If it's something we can't afford otherwise, that feels like a better ARPA project. Talking to the county and the state, definitely. What are they willing to do with you? How might you turn some of your money into a bigger pot? The manpower, I'm sure the folks in the administration will be happy to tell you what they need in order to run your programs. If it can't be done within the folks that currently work for the city, there are opportunities out there to either hire someone or buddy up with someone else and attack it jointly. Engage contractors early. So this is the architects and the engineers and anyone else that out in the private sector that you're going to need. You're not the only ones that got money. But there's only so many resources that can go around. So the sooner that you can engage with any vendors that you may need, bring them into the conversation, you want to be near the front of the line, you don't want to be at the end of the line. And then finally, we do need to finalize the 2020 calculation, because we'll be done with 2021 in less than two months, and that will give you a good idea about what you have available for the revenue loss calculation, which then opens up a lot of possibilities as to what you can do with that money. That's it for my prepared statement and comments. Are there any questions that I can answer for you this evening?
Do we have any questions?
I'm thinking about a community, can we use this money for community engineering, to engineer our community to be more conducive, to attract housing? Let's say, for instance, we got a lot of empty schools. We know we need housing, we know we need senior housing. Can we use this money to maybe to take some of the schools and revamp them for senior housing or, or resource centers and stuff like that?
So for any question... So for any question that you have, can we do such and such? Refer back to this slide first. If it doesn't, if it's not listed here, the odds are probably not. Other than the revenue loss. Revenue loss can be spent on anything. So to answer your question, sir, you, once you get to the revenue loss part, pick anything other than debt service or cutting taxes or making an additional pension contribution. Now, I think your question really is, can we do that with item 1B?
Yes, sir. Exactly.
I don't know. It sounds good. It's economic development. That makes sense to me. But when it comes to the federal government, it's not just whether it makes sense to us. Did they spell it out? So I would encourage you to refer back to the 40-some-page FAQ and see if that is addressed. And if it's not specifically addressed in that FAQ, it doesn't mean you can't, but you should ask federal treasury for their opinion as to whether or not that project will qualify.
I had a few real quick here, especially with 1A, 1B, and 2. Could you expound on what that might possibly mean for the city? On who would be able to be applicable to premium pay? Or who would be involved in pre-public health expenditures? What's involved in 1B? What, what type of industries?
Okay, so. So you confused me slightly, but let's talk about each of these buckets. So 1A, support public health expenditures. That could be the HVAC in this building that we talked about. That could be putting PP&amp;E, that could, throughout the city in various places. It could, if you had a, so a lot of communities have a city-sponsored health clinic. So that sort of thing, or vaccination programs. Even if it's not COVID, but health-related activities, public health, mental health. The counselors and the interventionists are crazy busy for the last year-plus, and I don't see them getting better anytime soon. So spending things on any form of healthcare, physical or mental, would qualify under that.
And in terms of any type of healthcare, would that include hospitals and nursing homes?
It can. But at the same time, what they're really trying to get at is things that you're running. So you have 100 doctors, 200 doctors in the city. You've got multiple hospitals. You have various clinics and whatnot. If you're going to do something outside of what is directly controlled by the city of Saginaw, there has to be a very clearly defined process and qualifications for who you're willing to give money to. And it has to be equitable. You can't play favorites. And you also, as part of that single audit we mentioned, if you're giving it to companies or a not-for-profit or some other organization, those become your sub- recipients. What that means in the single audit is you are responsible for what they do with that money. So you have to monitor your sub- recipients and make sure that they don't shoot you in the foot by doing something inappropriate. Because that's going to get tested.
Correct. If there are an amount of sub- recipients that are going to be benefited from these ARPA dollars in the city of Saginaw, is that likely or unlikely? Would it be an exception or would it be kind of the standard, given the type of industries that we have and the type of demographic and community that we have?
Is the question, is it unusual to have sub- recipients?
Yes.
It's not unusual. But normal, so we're talking about an astronomical number of dollars that are being put out there.
Correct.
So a lot of what I'm about to say, this has never happened before. We've never had this much money. Most of the time, when we're talking about sub- recipients, it's through something like the CDBG program or HUD, where they're doling out a smaller number to these very, very organized or long-term organizations. And it's a, it's a very clear process that's been developed over the last 40 years. So there's very clear rules. This is a little bit of the Wild West. Because we haven't had this much before and a lot of places are kind of creating it on the fly as to what kind of program we're going to support. That makes me, as a former auditor, makes me very nervous.
I would comment too, because it, these are, these are related, I think. Talking about 1A, 1B, and 2. What, the input that I've received is basically part of what Brian said. If you are going to do some type of premium pay, it should be for services that you provide as a local entity. And there's a broad range in those rules. The reason for the broad range is because they are for states, they are for counties, they are for cities, they are for tribal governments, they apply to everybody. So there might be industries in there that are referenced, but that doesn't mean everybody provides that. So you do have cities that run hospitals. State of Michigan provides Medicare and Medicaid to the health industry, which I think is why Governor Whitmer allocated to nurses and other healthcare professionals. But when you're, I imagine because of ARPA, our single audit is going to be drastically expanded over the next five years because it's based on the amount of money you receive from the federal government. That's going to be something that is looked at by our auditors. And also, probably since we're an entitlement community in Inspector General's office at the US Department of Treasury, the last time we had significant money was the, I think it was 2009, under the program that President Obama had. Inspector Generals, I met with them multiple times, and that was a fraction of what this money is. So what Brian's mentioning about look at what you provide if you're looking at essential pay, I think that is the message that we're, we're getting from multiple sources.
I mean, if it's your employees or even contractor that you have hired, their workers, if they were in some way serving the public on your behalf, that's about as far out as you could go. Not this business on the other side of town that we really have nothing to do with, but their people were interacting with the public. That's not what this is meant for.
But people that may be receiving Medicare or Medicaid money are covered under the CMS mandate currently in the city of Saginaw? If there are workers that work and live in the city of Saginaw, that may be applicable to the funds?
Not yours. Your ARPA money would not go to, in this case, it's.
Healthcare workers specifically.
Are they your healthcare workers? If they're working at the hospital, but they're not employed by the city of Saginaw, that's not who they're talking about.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm just a little bit confused now. I thought I was kind of understanding something.
I'm sorry, this must be my fault.
That's all right, that's all right. Because it's certain pieces of the ARPA information that I've been looking at, and this is one of several pieces, just, just a few pieces. And are you familiar with ARPA Section 602 and 603?
It does mention, yeah, that's the eligible uses included there.
Okay, so you know, I took a little quick break, so I may have missed it. Okay, so if I can just real quick, because I want to get good clarification with this. Under A, it says to respond to public health emergencies or its negative economic impacts, including assistance to households, small business, and nonprofit, or aid to impacted industries such as tourism, travel, hospitality. Go down to A sub-B 2. And it actually says, support hospitals, healthcare workers. Go down more, alternative care facilities. Go down long COVID care, medical expenses. Then go down to A sub-C, I'm sorry, D 1, community health workers. I want to get a good understanding on how it does not affect people in those industries. When I, am I reading this incorrectly? Please?
I would, I would just, I'll let Brian address that too. But as I mentioned, you, a lot of counties own nursing care facilities. So that would apply to a service they provide.
To the county?
Yes, there are several counties that own medical care facilities. There are cities that own hospitals, all across the country.
And Saginaw does not own any?
The city of Saginaw does not own any hospitals. We don't own any care facilities. We don't run any clinics. Potentially, you could have, we could have a nonprofit come that wants to provide vaccinations, that has a project like that. That's something that you probably could put under 1A or 1B. Or provide some other type of healthcare because you can tie back negative impacts of, COVID illustrates negative impacts on our community. So could you potentially use that funding for, to address general healthcare? Yeah, that's probably something you could do. We'd want to look at it further and look at the specific proj, project. But everything in those, this, there's a lot in the rules and they apply to everybody. So they're trying to address anything they could at the time. And then they have that in, that input period that we talked about to get the questions from every, from all the areas as well. And we will, we will work with the county on projects, as Brian said. In our meeting today, I mentioned to the state of Michigan that we, some, what Brian has in his presentation about limited capacity, we'll look to the state of Michigan for projects that they, projects or expenditures that they allocate ARPA dollars for as an example. But then we do have to research that further. But we, potentially, we can leverage those projects with state dollars and county dollars. But they still have to fit into that, how does the city provide those, does the city provide those services and how does it?
Okay, then the other part of that would be like, say for instance, Joe Blow lives in Saginaw and owns a facility. That would be the one question. And then the next part would be, what about the residents at that facility? And they actually live in the city of Saginaw? So is there a way around that? Is it still, you got to just pick and look?
So Tim addressed this, and it's got to be a service that you're already providing or that you're already overseeing. Now, you can go to that sub- recipient level. But there needs to be a really, really well-defined set of criteria as to who can participate. And then you have to administer that criteria. And then you have to police the people that you let participate and make sure that they, they do the right thing. So in your example, if the city said, we're going to have a program to help these, this criteria, small business, and this particular business fits the criteria, and you give money to that business and then they do something with it, if they don't do the right thing, that's not their fault, that's the city's fault. And if you go, if you fail your single audit later on, the federal government can say, you didn't do the right thing with your money, city of Saginaw. They're not worried about business ABC. City of Saginaw, you pay us back. Now, this happens all the time. There's a city, I won't say their name because I don't want to embarrass them, but they're on the west side of the state and the governor will be there tomorrow. They had to repay $100,000 of CDBG a few years ago. Imagine if you had to repay 5 million. Your budget can't handle that. The more intricate you make this, the more at-risk you will be.
So then my other question, forget that part, was about when it comes to, I guess we do things with weatherization and home improvement. Now, would that be an area that ARPA funding could be used for?
Again, I would, if it doesn't spell it out in the FAQs, you have to go to the federal government or the Michigan Department of Treasury and ask them if they agree.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And there is that ability to go to them and ask if they agree before we allocate this.
Absolutely.
Correct, so there is no final guidance on what we can and can't approve yet?
Correct. The rules have not been finalized. But you're, every city in America is asking these same questions. So there's some stuff that's very clear. You want to put in a water main, put in a water main. That's very clear. But the, the questions that you're getting at, it's very gray. And I applaud you for wanting to do these things to help folks. But if it's not clear, it may take you two years to get an answer from the feds. Because everybody's asking these same questions and they can only move so fast.
And if we have certain communities that are already allocating money, to say there's a community in California that had allocated $1,000 to each grocery store worker that had worked.
Who's to say that they did the right research?
Yeah, I agree. I totally agree.
My parents always told me, if a friend jumped off the bridge, would you follow? Like, no, I wouldn't.
No, but I don't, I don't agree with that analogy. But we do have, this is, this is not something that we're used to, right? This is something that is totally new. This is something that we are going to have to look to other communities to either take the lead or take example or deter from, correct?
I would say, we do the analysis ourselves. I would not recommend looking at whether another community does and assuming that's correct because we're on the hook.
Correct.
Not the other community.
And we are not done with the analysis as of yet, correctly.
Well, we haven't done any analysis. Council hasn't asked for anything to be allocated. So at this point, we are not researching items until we start looking at allocating because that, in my view, that's a waste of our time.
Yeah. And I think one of the main frustrations that we had seen from the meeting on the 30th is that there is no avenue to have people apply for these ARPA funds. And that it is, and I do applaud the city for taking the time to make sure that we're crossing all our Ts and dotting all our Is to not have this issue come up yet. There are a fair amount of people within the community that are concerned that this process is, you know, as we go through bureaucratic red tape, obviously, people are going to be upset, yet at the same time, until we come up with final rules, right, from the Treasury Department?
Even once the rules are final, they're still going to be subject to some interpretation.
Correct. Yet at the same time, and I, I wouldn't assume that they would be different than what the interim final rules would be. They may deviate a little bit, but.
It won't be substantially different.
What, what I've seen from my constituents is that there are people that are desperately in need of these funds. And they are looking for some type of guidance from the city to be able to unlock these funds. Because we do have $26 million in our account right now that can help either small businesses or people that have been, you know, working their butt off throughout this pandemic, that do qualify for some of what you said. I just want to make that a point that I bring up publicly. Also, with number four, is that changing now that we have up to $10 billion coming into the state through infrastructure?
To be determined.
Correct. And that's why it's so frustrating, right? Is that we kind of have to, to kind of keep thinking about. We don't have any final answer.
I would encourage, if you're talking to people, a lot of the issues that have come up are small businesses. I'm not sure of the status of the SEDC right now, but they did have emergency forgivable loans that took a long time to allocate out because businesses aren't applying for them. So there are a lot of resources out there, whether they're ARPA or other CARES Act or other COVID-related dollars. And we can work on providing, you know, getting that out in the. And we can work on providing, you know, getting that out in the public more, but that's, there are dollars available for things like that, too.
Yeah, and again, I ran into a small business owner, Rico's Taco, right by World of Faith, yesterday. And he had applied through the avenues that we had given him, never heard back from anybody. So the question that you ask, are we equipped to deal with this $52 million? Do we have the staff to move it? Do we have the help necessary to help all of our citizens? According to that small business owner, point of information, sorry. I'm sorry, I have the floor, real quick. We're not equipped to deal with that.
I would caution against, if you have questions about those things, and someone who's applied for a loan with SEDC has contacted you about that, refer them to the manager's office, so we can check with staff, because sometimes it's not necessarily that they didn't hear back, it's other various issues. And then we can reach out to those individuals to tell them if there's something the SEDC board still needs, or other things like that. So make sure if someone contacts you, please send them to the city staff to work with.
Yeah, I did give them the information. It was a $5,000 ask from Saginaw Future that they'd never heard back from, from the CARES Act. So I will continue to inform the city about that.
One of the things that we did, if everybody that came to the open house, we made sure that SEDC, community block grant, and, help me, Yolanda?
Housing rehab.
And the housing rehab program were on the table. We did that along with the ARPA, the ARPA app, the ARPA flyer. We did that to let the citizens know, you may not be eligible or in a position for us to give you ARPA dollars. However, we are trying to educate the community. I think a lot of the problem is, and thank you so much, sir. I think a lot of it is, is that because of all of the uncertainties, I know I'm one of the ones that I'm sure most people are wondering, how do I know so much? Because I read, and because I make myself educated. On this, there are cities close by us who have started to spend money that I kept hearing about, and they have to pay money back. Saginaw is not trying to jump out and spend unless we've got some, some handle on what we need to spend it on. I think a lot of times, it is so great, I would love to give all the essential workers some money, but realistically, I can't see, I can't see it. Because I know that you took care of people's loved ones while they were ill, I do know that. But we also had the grocery store person, we also had the gas station attendant. Because if I don't get no gas, I can't get to work. So, you know, we had all of these things. And so part of the discussion that we've been talking about in a lot of the meetings that I've been in throughout the state is that if it is not directly attached to your municipalities, you can't just do that without, like the gentleman said, you got to have some rulings on how you going to do it. And so we haven't gotten to that point yet. And so I think that's probably our next thing, where do we go from here? Yes, ma'am?
Okay, that's good information. And for me, I'm sitting here like, almost dumbfounded, because that information should have been relayed before just now. But it's good to be able to ask questions. And had that information been funneled down, probably I, myself personally, wouldn't have asked all those questions. Just like the information that was on the tables for the open house, I just told the people to get them. I didn't know why they were there. I just said, here's some information that's on the table, you know, in regards to CDBG, SED, whatever was on the table. So that should have been explained before I came into the room and sat down at the table with our citizens. Because I want to be informed, so they can be informed. So I'm informed now. I'm more informed just now than I was a few days ago. And I guess asking questions will get you informed.
And there are, what Mayor Moore is talking about, MML has had a lot of sessions, informational sessions, that are available to all council members. Treasury has, that we're open to municipal workers and council members. If you go to their websites, they usually have all of those videos available, recorded. You'll probably see Brian on the video. Because I know Plant Moran and public sector consultants, who we had previously, have been involved in a lot of those sessions. So they're available on there. Just go to Michigan Treasury website, or MML. They're all there, is that correct, Mayor?
They're all there. They've even got some up-to-date ones. Most of you council people, you should have received some emails, if you're on the email list. They've got some more workshops coming out, specifically designed for ARPA. We meet every Friday. So check your email. If it's not on your email, go into the email, MML, and you've got access to it. The way you can get, you can go back and look, and then if you're not sure, my door is open. I've always said that.
So at this time, do we have confidence that we can say yes or no to constituents that are coming to us about what they're able to apply for, or what they're not able to apply for?
For individual residents?
That fall within that purview?
Right now, you don't have, the program's established, so you don't have an answer to that question.
Okay, thank you so much.
That's what we need to work on as a council. Where do we go from here? We did some series, now we need to talk with the city manager and the staff to say, where do we go from here? And we all need to be on the same page, saying the same thing. Because we're not, right now. I can tell you that apart. We're not saying the same thing.
Mayor, I would add some information that we, that Mr. Karwak sent today, too. We did receive from the state of Michigan our Act $51, which is our road dollars. Last meeting, I mentioned the importance of our population. The census reduction is probably going to reduce our Act $51 by about $800,000 this year. So that's a significant amount of our local streets and major streets dollars. And as Brian mentioned, the revenue loss portion, you could try to make that up. That's one of the uses. What, I think if we talk to Treasury more, and auditors, and controllers, they're likely going to be recommending that we spend the money on items that are specifically outlined in the rules, so that we know we're not violating any issues with the grant. And I can tell you firsthand, as Brian also mentioned, every city, county, state in the country is going to be submitting questions for the US Department of Treasury. I submitted questions back in March, and I've never received anything back. So if you can, given this timeline, we're going to see, and I saw Phil nodding during the presentation, too, engineering, contractors, they are going to become more and more scarce as local units start to spend these dollars. So how do you move forward with some of these projects? And not just that, we're going to see, I think inflated prices on a lot of the items that we use, both because of supply chain, but then the increased demand. If you recall, the roof, just the small roof on the fire training tower, I think our engineering estimate was somewhere around 26,000 for that, and the bids came back 50,000 plus. And that was before all of this extra money was in the system. I think that the impact on the demand for those skilled trades, materials, and engineering costs is going to have a significant impact on everything we do in the city, even outside of ARPA. So that's something to consider as you see things start to move through the system.
Yep, I agree with the city manager on that one. We got people coming down to our school trying to get pre-apprenticeship people to do pipe fitting and roofing right now, because they can't get contractors. I got people calling me all the time, looking for people to do work. Because the guys now are picking and choosing what work they want to do based on what a person want to pay for the work. You know, so we're going to be experiencing that with these funds. I can't imagine, everybody know right now that everywhere you go, everybody looking for workers. So do you think they're not looking for engineers, pipe fitters, carpenters? They looking for them now, so these funds are going to be, it's going to be wild when it comes to spending them and doing what we need to do for our city. So we all got to keep our eyes open and try to keep those kids in school. So maybe two or three years from now, we have some journeymen out there that can do the work in the city of Saginaw, and that would build our city up. If we got journeymen in the city of Saginaw, that mean they going to live in the city of Saginaw, hopefully. And they be building some nice homes, and that would build our infrastructure. So hopefully, these funds can be used in some kind of way to build our own infrastructure with our own citizens, so.
Any more questions? Yes, Bill?
Yeah, Brian, good presentation. Where I was really focusing into, as you were talking about, these years of revenue loss that we're trying to project. And $5 million is what we kind of heard for the first, what we're looking at right now. As we move into the other years, and hopefully they'll switch that calculation the way we've done this. And I think we also are members of NLC, but in my mind, I'm trying to figure, so what if we get into the next year, does that $5 million still stand? Or can that change? Or do we see something? Once we've determined that, that's our number, and then we can start the use effort?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, thanks for that, that's right.
Anyone else? We thank you so much, you and the young lady.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks for coming.